Turn the evil count towards us. Yes, please.
There you go. Thank you.
We want to ship that.
First thing we need, you should have the minutes from the previous meeting of July 17th. After review, could I have a motion to approve all the eight minutes as presented?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next thing you should have is a copy of the bill. Are there any additions and deletions to this bill?
No, there is not.
Okay. You should have these for a little while now. Need a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Second for discussion.
Okay, discussion.
I have a question on the Champlain Telephone Company bill for the police and fax fertilizer, sixty-two oh two. At the last meeting, we saw that, that that line hasn't been used in almost four months. We asked the office to don't find we weren't using it in discontinuum, and we're still paying for it. Is there a reason why we're still paying for it?
Is this, uh, is this, this isn't the line that our residents call to get the voicemail, right? They call the police department? If they call the police department extension? Because, you know, we have a voicemail that tells them where, where to call. So we want to maintain that. Is this that line?
No, this is the fax and fertilizer.
Okay. So, uh, at this point, let's, uh, could we get a quarter, or could, could we make a call to Champlain Telephone and, uh, cut that off? Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Other than correspondence, Tom, clerk.
We received an email from John Mott. Please use this email as my formal resignation from the zoning board. Thanks, John Mott. And that was dated August 2nd. And we need a motion.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Mott from the zoning board of appeals.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I would like to thank Mr. Mott for many years of service on that board. I think it was in the double digits, so. Okay, the first thing, uh, reports of mayor. Uh, discussion approved of anti-harassment policy. You guys should have received a copy of that. This is, actually replaces the workplace violence policy. And this revision called anti-harassment policy is recommended by our insurance carrier, Niner, municipal insurance reciprocal. So, uh, it's, uh, from, from them and, uh, it's, you know, what they feel we should have to cover ourselves. But it covers workplace violence, it covers, uh, all the different discrimination, sexual harassment, regular harassment, uh, physical contact, fighting, any name. And I'm sure you've already read through it several times, it's been in your box, I know that it's there. So, uh, I would like a motion to approve this, uh, anti-harassment policy.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, we received, uh, some requests from our local, uh, businesses in the downtown area. They'd like to conduct some sidewalk sales. Uh, the co-enforcement officer advises us that as long as the sidewalk isn't, you know, completely blocked, as long as there is reasonable passage, that, uh, there's nothing that going on that would prevent that. Uh, you know, I think certainly, uh, I know the restaurants have been prospered, for instance, have been pretty successful at that, and hopefully, uh, we might provide another opportunity for our merchants that are taking residents downtown to sell their wares. So, uh, I'd like a motion approving, uh, merchants using the sidewalk for sales of their product. And provided they maintain open-
Walkway.
-reasonable, open walkway for people to walk on the sidewalk.
I'll make a motion for the sidewalk sales, providing that, uh, they adhere to all, uh, the public ordinances.
Okay. Wait a second.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried, thank you. Uh, the next thing, uh, the public's maintenance worker position. We had five people that applied. All five were deemed, uh, on, they did not qualify for civil service. The, uh, the main bone of contention, I believe, uh, our clerk can help me with this, is that they didn't have the requisite two years of municipal work experience.
Clear.
Um, what I'd like to do, and what I'd like to suggest, is that we re-advertise this position, this time with the salary and with the fact that it has full benefits, health benefits, paid vacation, paid sick leave. You, you know what the benefits are. I think it might be, it might draw a little bit more attention. Um, I think, you know, we should go again in the, in the press, as well as, you know, Department of Labor's free, uh, Craigslist is seven dollars per day for, for parents.
Yes, yes.
Uh, the Sun and the Islanders, all charged by the word, have to send them the ad, and then they'll give you the estimate as it, as it is. How much is the press?
For seven days, it was at least five hundred dollars.
Okay. But we have, we, we, I mentioned to you guys that perhaps, since we have open MEO slots, we could do that, but MEO's, uh, position description does not allow them to read meetings, and that's one of the things that, that this person does. And this is a, a very wide-ranging position, but gives them an opportunity to do a lot of duties. So, um, I suggest that we re-advertise it with the salary posted and with the benefits outlined. I think it'll make it, uh, more of a-
Incentive?
Incentive, and it's a better recruiting type thing. I mean, you know, it's, if someone sees they're going to be getting, you know, health insurance and retirement and vacation time, sick leave, it's, it's, it's pretty good. We've seen that at this point in our economy, there's a lot of people looking for jobs, so hopefully we can find somebody qualified. What are your thoughts on that?
I, I agree with the way that you want to advertise it. I, I totally agree with that. I don't think that we should have it in Press Republican at this time. I'd like to try the Sun, because that hits every house in the village. And everybody gets it in their mail once a week, so it's, whereas the press is probably twenty percent maybe at best. I don't know what their, what their rate is, but we've done it once with them, and we got virtually no, no responses. So let's try it with the other mediums, mediums, uh, Craigslist, uh, the Sun for a couple of weeks maybe, and, um-
I'd like to see it advertised outside of the village, too.
Well, the Sun goes to every place in three counties.
Right.
You know? Every house.
But what we put in the, what we put in the, um, Press Republican was, you know, pretty limited. We didn't list any salary-
Yeah, because it's so expensive, for one thing, but-
Well, we, this is a-
But more quality.
This is a pretty important position, and, uh-
I agree.
We need to invest money to, to get this filled. Um, but, that's Tom's opinion, what's the rest of your opinion?
I think, I mean, we're gonna be short of help as it is, so.
You have a position in mind?
No, I'm just positioning-
No, the same position.
Same position.
Different advertising in a different way.
We're gonna put the salary and put the benefits out.
Present, present it in a, in a more attractive-
Something I asked, where they go higher in part-time pop and said it couldn't be done. We got our hands slapped by civil service.
Well, we could list in civil service for that position. You can't list, must be certified-
Yeah.
-as a, as a New York State peace officer. Because everybody has to be able to apply for that, and then the village would have to pay for that training. That doesn't apply to this position.
Yeah.
So nobody's hands are gonna get slapped. We're just giving more inform, we're, I'm suggesting, you know, we give more information so that when you-
Oh, yeah.
Let's say you were looking for the job, you picked it up, be like, okay, so, wow, okay.
Salary range, too. You know, starting salary, and then whatever it goes to after probation, it does that, doesn't it?
No. It's a contract salary, this is what you get.
And then the, just regular annual pay raises and stuff.
Whatever the contract, like, the next contract, whatever comes up.
I think we should advertise it with the Press everything, I mean, you know.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth it.
I mean, for five hundred bucks, or what the hell, I mean, we've already spent five hundred bucks with them.
Well, we're-
Well, we need to-
We need to-
We're trying to get qualified people, so.
Yeah.
Not that we won't, we, we wouldn't do it in the Sun, we'll see what that'll cost. Um, and see if it's minimal, let me know when-
Well, it's probably gonna be several hundred dollars, I mean, maybe like two hundred or something. But even so, I mean, I'd rather put it in that, it goes to every single house, than one that hit or miss what goes to.
I think people who are looking for jobs are gonna probably look at them in the Press, I mean, more so than the Sun.
Yeah. The only time I read the Sun is if I'm in there. Other than that, I don't read it. I teach in every week, if you want. And I'd read it every week. I'll talk to Tia.
Right, so can I get a motion that we advertise this position, uh, in this, uh-
All the papers.
Yeah. All the media we talked about, um, for a week, and that we include the descriptions of the salary and the benefits with it.
So moved.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Okay, motion's carried, thank you. Okay, we have a budget resolution next. Mr. Treasurer, that budget resolution reflects-
Outstanding purchase orders that at the end of the fiscal year, it has to be re-appropriated because you've moved monies from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year.
Okay. Uh, you should have that in front of you. And then again, it's, uh, just moving money from, from the one fiscal year to the next. Okay, this is, uh, Budget Modification Resolution, twenty seventeen thirty-two. Um, the Board of Trustees, deemed as advisable, make certain modifications in twenty seventeen, eighteen Village's budget to reflect the May thirty-first, twenty seventeen outstanding purchase orders. So therefore, it will be resolved that the Treasury is authorized and directed to make the following modification of the Village's budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, as you agree. So, could I have a motion to, uh, to accept this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Baffa?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. Okay, the next resolution is, uh, Standard Working Reporting Resolution for elected and appointed officials. As you all know, uh, you are given the opportunity as part-time employees to, uh, join the New York State Retirement System, and we decline, uh, one of our officials, uh, Trustee Menard is already in the system, and he doesn't have any option here. The law says that he has to join the system, and, uh, any cost, he, he will pay the same payroll deduction from his trustee, uh, salary that he does, same percentage as he does in his other jobs at the New York State Retirement System. So what we need is a resolution, excuse me, a motion accepting this resolution and allowing, uh, Trustee Menard to, uh, his work here to be submitted to the New York State Local Retirement System.
What this resolution is doing is, is, uh, creating the standard workday for the month.
Okay. Could I have a motion approving this resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Aye, second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Says you gotta work six hours a day here, Dale.
No, that's not what it says.
Minimum hours, standard workday.
Look at, look over there, I have a record of activities as well.
He can bog down the pipe for me.
Don't read, don't read the directions, just come up with a thing. Okay. Um, something that came up, Trustee Baffa brought it up to me and wanted it to be discussed. It's not controversial, or much like that. If you remember, we agreed we're gonna brush hog the beach, uh, beach area a few times, uh, a year. It's been done once. There is state land, which is south, excuse me, which is south, south of the old beach area and east of Montgomery Street, that has been mowed as a regular lawn. Uh, at one time, the residents were mowing it, and then there was some controversy about residents parking their vehicles and other things on there. Uh, part of administration said you can't do that, so the village took over and mowing, mowing that at, at residential level. Um, the last direction we gave them was the state land was to be brush hogged. Um, if, do we want to go back to mowing that down to domestic level, south of where the beach is, in front of the homes that, that are-
That belongs to the Bridge Commission.
Actually, it belongs to the Department of the Bridge Commission. DEC owns it.
Right.
The old lake bottom, that, not the Bridge Commission.
Yeah, we used to own it. Yeah, we lost it, they were supposed to give it to us and it didn't-
And the fact is, they own it now. So, do, do we want to mow that down to domestic level, or do we want to just brush hog it?
I think just brush hog it, I think. I, I was under the impression, we talked about this last time, I thought when they said brush hogging, they're talking down at the beach area where it's rough and brush hogging, but up in the front, like, from, say, front of Mott's house down to those houses, down where the beach starts, where, where it starts, well, you know, there's a ditch there. I think they ought to mow that. I mean, they got big moors, they can make four or five passes and they're done, and that's our lakefront. And we have very, we don't have that many places in the village that you can, you know, drive along the lake and look at it, and, and that's one of them, and, you know, I mean, downtown, it's all buildings and everything, and it's a nice thing, you can walk in the rain and everything.
Except for the library to the taxi.
Huh?
Except for the library to the stores.
Well, there's little breaks in it, but I mean, you know, and we don't mow that either, and we get, you know, and it looks terrible.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that's, the question is, and, 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 Trustee Baffa brought this up, do we want to, uh, you, would you like me to have the Civic Center employees who are doing the mowing, mow that at domestic level? In other words, like a, like a lawn, whole lawn.
It's nice grass there, too. It's not all weeds and brush and everything.
Well, if we used to do it, that's why we can't do it anymore.
Well, I mean, they're functioning under the last thing we told them, to do brush hogging.
Yeah.
That's been done, it'll just be a change in duties, and, and if you, if you guys want to do that, we don't need a motion, just tell me that's what, generally what y'all wanted to do, and make it happen.
Yes.
I think, and-
Yes? Yes? Yes, yes.
That's what we can do to make the villages look nicer.
Okay, so I will, uh, take care of that tomorrow. I'll see that they're mowing it. Um, right now, their, the county has come up with, they gotta make about four more little soccer fields, so they've got a lot of stuff going on, but we'll take care of that. Okay.
Have we heard when anyone's coming in from community service? We talked about some work along the cross from Veterans Park, all those rocks are all covered with weeds.
Well, there's, those, that's just what it is, that's riprap that was put down there. And they're mowing where it's, where there's no riprap, but as far as getting out into those rocks, no, we don't have any, you're talking about, um, state corrections?
Yes.
No, we haven't had, heard them coming into town yet. It's, uh, it'd be a pretty arduous time, but we can see if they can do it, but it's-
They've done it along the other parts, and kept it-
I, I think, I think it can be re-contoured a little bit, um, where the riprap is, still keep the riprap, of course, because it's there for a purpose, but just kind of smooth it out and put some dirt on top of it so they can mow it better, maybe not perfectly, but better than it is now.
I think, like you and I mentioned in our conversation today, that it probably might be a good fall project-
Yeah, after that dies down, they can see what's on their-
We'll keep our eyes open for, uh, the opportunity for the other things.
The mowers this? The Veterans Park on the other side of the street.
You know where the water level station is, but it's-
Well, you can't see the water?
It's mowed, it's mowed right to there, though, I mean, that's-
Right. The thing of it is, if you put, you can't put dirt in there, because the water comes up, takes the dirt right out of there.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's, and you can't-
No.
You can't really mow that, but you know what, let's, we'll, in the fall, as we get farther into the fall, September and October, we can, the leaves go away, let's see what we can do.
We, we can't make it perfect, but we can make it so it's easier to maintain, I think, just by moving stuff around.
No, we'll put that probably in the October agenda and see how that comes up. Okay. And so, Trustee Arnold, do you have anything?
Uh, the library.
Yep.
Uh, I talked into Susan, and apparently she did get her grant for to fix the bricks.
Yeah.
And, uh, she's thinking about, I guess, our son got the money already, our son?
No, no.
No, you didn't get the money yet?
No.
You're supposed to, I guess.
It's coming.
It's coming, yeah, okay. So anyhow, uh, bricks are gonna be fixed, I think, in the end of September, I think.
Excellent.
So, she's gonna take care of that and stuff, and, so other thing out, she said is going good, and her next grant is to do something with the, something with the building anyhow.
Okay.
Anyhow, and also, uh, I talked to Cliff, he called me up today, and said that he's been really, really busy with work, and-
Our co-enforcement officer?
Yes. And he's been really busy with work, and they've been making him do a lot of overtime and stuff, so he hasn't been able to, he's trying at night, late at night and stuff, to get things, uh, monitored for the different things that he's doing, uh, people with long grass and stuff like that, and sending letters, and some people, they sent letters to, he's, you haven't heard back from, and, yeah. So, he said that's, so, that's what he's doing, and stuff like that, so he's gonna try to get out of overtime there and stuff, and get back really doing that, his business, I guess, so. And also, uh, we've got a, well, I'll talk to you after about this, uh, about the memorial down there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, whatever, do we need to do this in executive session, or?
No, 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 I just, I just wanna give you a little alert on that after, yeah, that's all I have.
I guess, in conjunction with that, I know that, um, our recreation leader was down here measuring-
Yes, I was talking to her today.
Yeah, measuring the path, so there's a half-mile loop, and there's a quarter-mile loop, and then she's figuring out another loop. I don't know, she's getting all these loops.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, you'll find a leg and press machine that's out there, uh, has gotten closer and closer. When it was first put up, you could step into it, put your feet down, you could press with your arm, press your legs, and it has gotten pushed in. Um, she spoke to the CEO of the company today, and he's sending a new arm with, uh, new rubber bra mit that's in there, and a tool to replace it, so that should be here within a week. Other than that, equipment's good. The kiosk, the sign-in for the, for using the rec equipment is, is been made, it's just gonna have to be mounted on a pole, and the message board, uh, that's talked about having out front here, which will have, you know, different events that are going on, uh, that's here and has to be installed, and we're gonna try to squeeze that in, or I'm gonna ask Brian to try to squeeze it in, um-
Like our dog?
Yeah, when we put the, the-
When we put the dog doodle things in?
Yeah.
If you could do the sign at the same time.
Yeah.
I know where the two go here, but I don't know about the ones that you're requesting out in the street. We have to get together and-
Yeah, and, yeah, I'll get together with you tomorrow.
Yes, please.
Stuff.
All right, and you, you talked to Jan about where the message board's gonna go, and where the bar things are gonna go, and where the key, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
How does Jan say it's being received by the public? Is it, does it-
Oh, yeah.
Oh, a lot of people. And you were five people down here today, when I was, when Dan was down here and I was down here.
Yeah, there was just somebody-
They were walking, and very coupled with, so it's, it's, it's- Pretty good, and then, any, any word on the pickleball, that's that part of the project? That's coming, Joe.
That's gonna be done, uh, in, uh, late August or September, I think. I think she sent you a email, they need to get, uh, the basketball thing moved to the side, so, other than that, they're gonna come and paint it, and get that all done, and sink in the pole, so pickleball will be here, and, uh, I'm sure they'll be a lot of people happy, so. Okay.
Well, not only that, I think, I think what we ought to do is tell the public that, if they see some kids down here trying to ruin these pieces of equipment, that, you know, they got right that they can tell them to cut it out, I think.
Well, yeah, I think it's part of the community, you know, part of the community-
Right.
They don't wanna get in a confrontation with anybody.
Right.
They can certainly identify them and report it.
But the day I was down here, at one of the concerts down here, and I started walking down there and hollered at a kid that he was taking that thing and just trying to flip it over, you know?
It doesn't go that way.
No, no.
Best you wish, sometime, that, you know, potentially, it can't go up that high, but if it did, it could come back and whack you, you know, so-
Right.
It's a safety issue, too.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're manufactured to be pretty hard to, to, uh-
Right.
-get injured on and to do that, so that's good. All right, Trustee Dart?
Yes, administrative assistant position. Um, I want to start with the same thing that I started with at the last meeting, cases, folks watching this meeting tonight, if you can catch the last one. We are creating a new position with, with a new person within our office. Our administrator has chosen not to renew her contract, so, uh, she has duties that obviously need to be done by someone else. And so we thought we would try to class them, or see what civil service thought about classing them under administrative assistant. Um, we submitted, um, distinct, the distinguishing features of the class, typical work activities, a copy of what our administrator's, uh, position was described as, plus, um, typical duties, and, uh, it was like, uh, eleven pages of duties they went over. Say eleven pages, it wasn't like it was eleven full pages, some, some pages, I had three things on it, four things on it. So, four business days ago, um, I got their reaction back from it, and, uh, they have a ton of questions if we want to try to, um, put these job duties that we suggested to them under administrative assistant. Majority of answers that they came back to our suggestions of duties was just the word "assist." When we, when we put something down, "will do," da-da-da-da-da, they came back and said, "we'll assist the department head," or "we'll assist this and that." I think it says "could assist" to me, or not "will." Could advise, could assist, could assist, can assist. Right, but not, not actually do, take over the full duty themselves.
Right.
That's, that's the point they were making.
Yeah.
And, uh, there was somebody had questions on before they answered it, before they answered them, and, uh, I was just starting to put together some of their answers, but, um, talking with, uh, Trustee Baffa about this today, and maybe we're, we're taking a wrong approach to it, we're taking all these duties and trying to find, uh, a title to put it Trustee Baffa had mentioned to me today that perhaps some of the duties that were being done by the administrator were, they're only once a year, or they're five or ten minutes here and then, could be, uh, spread upon our current employees, and then take what's left, and then see if we can find a job class, or, I don't know if my Trustee Baffa wants to elaborate anymore on that, or not.
You know, the, the job is so complex, but it doesn't need to be complex, it's just that a lot of odds and ends were put into the job over and above its core features of being the administrator, and a lot of those jobs, I feel, can safely be revert back to And a lot of those jobs, I feel, can safely be revert back to the individual department heads where they probably were originally before we had an administrator. Just to give one example, not to belabor this thing at the meeting, but one of the duties of the administrator was people would come in and request for the sign out in front of the rec center, the electric sign that the, that the theater group bought for us. And then the village board established guidelines for what would be on there. So they'd get a request that would come in, the administrator would look at it, see if it complied with the guidelines, and then tell Cody O'Brien, the rec center manager, to change the sign out there. Well, I'm thinking, he's a manager, he's got, he can be given the guidelines and have the, have the request rooted to him and he can make his decisions by himself. And, you know, that's just one minor example, it doesn't happen real often. It's, you know, not a very big job, but it takes, one of the things that we have to be able to write in such a way that civil service would, would approve it, to put it onto somebody else that's not really in the loop for that, that it will, I think it will simplify things in getting this, getting this position more clearly defined. And, you know, we just on face values today identified a half a dozen of these type things. There's probably a lot more, we should probably go line by line through it if we could find them all and do what we can there. And then, when you got it down to what actually is a core group that needs to be done inside the office in a central location, we can maybe frame that into a job description for someone. So that's, that's kinda the way we're sort of looking at it now.
I think, you know, I, I think it's a good idea to try and do what you're doing, but, you know, using that example I, I think is minimizing some things. You know, Family Medical Leave Act, you gotta determine if somebody's eligible, you know, approving official, coordinating all that activity when that pops up, and that's popped up four or five times in the last six months. Some of this other stuff, you know, grievances come through, the administrator contract review, reviews copyright law with our attorneys, I mean, there's, you know what? As I, as you and I talked about today, and I thought we had a pretty good discussion, trustee Vather and I, it's... We all come and go. Mayors, trustees come and go. There's three people in this village that administratively stayed there. And the administrators, we've had the administrator, I think, since nineteen eighty-two, which is thirty-five years. So we've got a village clerk, we've got a treasurer, we've got, we had an administrator and a treasurer. These people are there, they're, they're the ones that answer the phones and answer the questions and they're a point of contact. If somebody has a question about something, they call the village office and they refer it to somebody and they expect to be able to do that. And so we're gonna have to find, I mean, after you guys go through, and if you could figure out a way to, you know, to, who's gonna do the, the employee relation things with, with our personnel, lawyers, policy and procedures, grievances, the contract reviews, things like that, and who's gonna be the point of contact on some of these things? Who they call? Who can they get a hold of from eight to four every day? You know, it's a, you know it's a heavy lift. It's gonna be a tough thing to do. And, you know, I applaud you for trying to do it. And I think it's, you know, something that if you work at it, you might be able to find it, but you're gonna have, the things you have to assign to it, you have to assign to people that have the statutory authority to make, to make that decision, to do it. It can't just be anybody. And, you know, that's, that's the deal with village law. I mean, it's, there's only a certain number of people that have that authority.
We can, we can make a list, but I'm not assigning anything to anybody. I can make a list of what things is, but I'm not, I'm not a supervisor of anybody of all these employees.
Well, it'll be a far decision. Maybe we'll make some recommendations, what we think it would fit. And I don't know, maybe we'll only be able to get a half a dozen, maybe we'll get a bunch more than that, maybe not. But I think it's the way to go.
Well, in the interim, in the interim, these things are still happening, you know, and, and, you know, little things that come up, you know, fortunately, you know, there was a stop sign knocked down. The ones we just put up on Montgomery Street and cars, I went, did somebody call me, I went down there and of course, didn't see a stop sign, they were heading northbound on Montgomery, zoom. And people coming out of that marina are now used to people stopping. Nothing happened. And within a few minutes of, I contacted our public work supervisor who called, who assigned someone to go out and fix it and they went right out and did it, and we got the sign back up within a couple hours. But, you know, that's one thing, you know, and if I'm not around and they call the water plant and, you know, hopefully, you know, we can, we can keep things, keep things in order, but the more, you know, we have a, as you know, we have an FLA, MLA, Family Medical Leave Act issued, two of them, going on right now, that have to be closely monitored. There's, there's deadlines for all these things. My village clerk told me today, said there was one deadline today that sorta got met, but you had to reach out for more information from the doctor. It's, you know, looking from, outside looking in, it's like, well, do a couple reports and that's it? Well, that's really not, not what it is. But I think going at it, the way you're suggesting you go at it, is identify them all and do it by, you know, speaking to our clerks, speaking to our, our treasurer, finding out, you know, what, what are the things that they're faced with every day that they, that they didn't have to handle before. And if we can find a way to sign them, great, you know, but if we can't, we're gonna have to find, like you say, get that position developed for whatever they call it, you know, and go from there, but.
I just, the rest of the board doesn't have a copy like you have or I have, at least. Under legal, the civil service, all of these duties here should be handled by the village attorney. Employee relations, policy and procedure grievances, contract review, code review and clarification, discussion or action upon various external cases in progress and copyright law. So we know when we go back to them.
How do they get to the attorney? People aren't gonna call the attorney.
Right, I'm just saying what they've said, okay?
Well, no, but they're right, because the attorney is involved in all these, but the administrator took that information to them, put it together, said, here's what we got, now what, what should we do? Somebody's gotta do that.
Well, what did George Rivers do when we didn't have the village administrator?
He was paid to be the administrator. And he wanted to spend, he spent his eight hours a day there.
I know George, well, yeah, he spent eight hours a day, he could've spent fifty hours a day if he wanted to. I mean, that's the way George was.
Okay, but we're, we're not, yeah, but that's why. He, he took, he said, I'll accept the administrative job for the time he was there, but I mean, for the last few years, he's had an administrator.
Oh, now it depends how, how.
Let's see if we can get it done, I mean, let's see if you guys can get it done. I mean, I'm not suggesting it's impossible. I'm saying it's gonna be a heavy lift, so, you know, I guess.
Well, I guess, you know, just speaking hypothetically, not specifically, okay? You say something, an issue comes into the village office and it has to be referred to someone else for action, like the one we just used, the attorney. An issue comes into the village office and you're saying, who's the link that sends it to the attorney? Well, that's what this new position is gonna be, hopefully.
Okay, then again, they're saying that, that the administrative assistant is not involved in that legal process that they do it. Now, if you can explain it as you just did, say, well, we'll have, can the administrator take the information, write a memo, you know, cite what, you know, our particular code and our particular contract says, forward that to the attorney and say, hey, what do you think? Or pick up the phone and call Nikon, say, here's what we got, you know? And maybe as a, a less expensive way, there's not billable hours and you still can get legal advice, but when you need to have documents, it's gotta come from our attorney. It's, it's, look, it's, I think you're going about it, you're getting answers, you're gonna answer them and they're gonna come back, but in the meantime, we're gonna be without it. So I think, well, we're just gonna have to see. Have you run into anything yet? It's only been a day. I mean, today, did you run into anything, Tom?
The FMLA.
FMLA, yeah. But you never handled before, and now you had to handle it.
And the same thing with parking. People who park at the civic center or park at the welcome center, I've had to handle that.
Yeah.
And notify the sheriff's department. I've never done that.
So all these little, today, there's two examples. FMLA comes in, stop complete, gotta contact the doctor, get that back. Somebody wants to park three days in a parking lot, gotta let the sheriff know, take pictures of the cars, get that sent in.
Why would you do that? Why would you do that?
Well, because the car's gonna be parked there for three days. They don't wanna get them towed, so they're, they're, they're saying we-
There's cars parked up there all the time. Three, four days a week.
Right here, right here, right outside.
Oh, I thought you said the welcome center.
No, right here.
The welcome center and here, and we always-
I know, it's the welcome center. There's cars parked there sometimes for two weeks.
We used to know, yes, but they would notify us, notify the police department.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, the Canadians, they park there, they go on the train for two weeks sometimes and come back. I, I'd be walking by and they say, can we park our car there? I don't care, ain't my parking lot. Park there.
Long's a railroad anyway.
Long's a railroad anyway.
We're not talking about, what we're talking about-
We're talking about the parking as a railroad, not we're talking about this.
The one that I was talking about was the letter, the email I got today, a couple people wanna park their car here 'cause they're going on a bike.
Well, you know, you know the way we used to handle it? There was, there was fifty cars in the parking lot here last Sunday.
I'm not talking about one day, I don't understand it. You don't, you don't-
This is not complicated. What we used to do is somebody would come to the village office and say, can I park my car there? I'm going on a bike trip for three days, when Portugal was mayor. And we'd give them a piece of paper, like an orange thing like this, and they'd write the dates on it and say there and they'd put it in your windshield.
Who had done?
At the counter, you'd pull it out from under the counter, you'd write the date, hand it to them, ten seconds.
Who did it?
Probably Mary and Auntel.
Yeah, like Mary or Betty or one of them.
Yeah, just, it's not, it's not like a big fan.
She wouldn't give away the paper.
There's something else to do.
Who?
You think, you think that the deputy treasurer's gonna wanna be doing that or the, I mean, they're chuckling because they know that this is, you know, I mean, it's not thirty-five years ago.
People come in there for fishing licenses and everything else. If somebody wants a parking permit, that's a simple thing, you don't have to call the sheriff or notify anybody, take pictures of the car, that's crazy.
No, they take pictures of the car.
Well, they can if they want to, they can do whatever they want. It doesn't involve us.
It's called notifying the village, that's all. What I'm saying, Tom, is there's, there were two little things that came up to me, but every day it mounts up. When I sit there and watch it for the last year and a half, that's what it's like. It's non-stop. But, look, let's see how this comes out. Let's see how your discussions come out. You know, the, like I said, I told trustee Vather today, the personnel director called me on Thursday and said, you know, I, I'm not sure what we're gonna be able to do with this. I said, well, you know, the board wants to try to do this, so I appreciate you working with them and, you know, let's see how it comes out. But it's not a, it's gonna take some more work, so. That's kinda like where we're at.
Right, after we're done, if we can find any of this out, our returned employees, and we look at what we've got, it may be an entirely different classification of employee, you know? It could be some, an HR title.
Yeah.
Not stepping on anyone else's duties that it's in the law to, you know, that they have to specifically do it, do it. It could be some kind of a office.
Well, I guess we're just gonna have to wait and see. In the interim, you know, we'll, let's, you know, we'll make all the things that come up.
Just like, I just think everybody has to be open-minded about, you know, they may, they may have to accept another small duty that only happens once or twice a year.
Yeah, I don't think that's a big problem.
Well, it's, like I said, I'm not gonna assign it, I'm just gonna come up with a list of ones I think can be done. Tom's gonna help me with that.
Yeah.
And present it to the mayor and then he can designate it as he wishes.
I think you need to, you know, you need to do that, send the board for review.
For review, yeah.
Have a discussion and say, see if that, that can work out and have a discussion with the employees that it's gonna be assigned to too, you know, see what they think, so.
Well, as far as I know, you know, any, any two trustees on a committee are never empowered to make a decision on behalf of the board.
Right.
Their, their power to go out, gather information, bring it back to the board, and then the board will decide on that decision.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, on, on a lot of different issues.
Okay.
But it hasn't been for me, not trying, you know? They dragged their feet until four business days ago was the first contact they had with me. As a matter of fact, it was going so slow, I had reserved a cab to go down there and talk with them, say, hey, what's going on? It happened to me the day before that.
Well, like I said, you know what, we're not, we're not the only village that's, or, or town in the county that's going to them. They're, they service everybody, not just Rousas Point, so we're not right at the top of their list.
Right, I'm telling you, that's why I'm staying on topic.
We're not the only town that don't have an administrator either.
Towns don't have an administrator.
Village, in fact, we're the only one that had one.
There's two, there's only two villages in the county. Shantland and Rousas Point, and then there's the city, which, which has a full-time mayor.
Yeah.
They voted, they have, the city has a charter that they voted on, we know. Okay.
Tom, what happened when you were mayor? Did you have an administrator?
Yes. Sometimes I didn't, sometimes I didn't. I think for two years it was a disaster. We had two different ones the first two years, the last two years we didn't have one at all.
And what happened?
Ran fine. They ran better than we had the administrator.
And how many years ago was that?
Well, the only thing I can tell you, Dan, is it was a long time ago, but it had a lot more work than it does now because there was more departments.
How long ago was it?
Twenty years, eighteen years.
Regulations changed, so we can't, it's apples and oranges. It's different now. So, you know, that's, that's what-
Well, probably the mayor should take on more duties.
Well, if you wanna advertise and mayor run as a full-time mayor, then you're gonna pay him. You know, say, okay, we'll pay the mayor sixty-five thousand dollars a year, he's gonna be there every day. That's what, that's what you'll have to make a decision for, for the next job, you know, the next time it comes up for election. That's what, that's what you need to do. If that's where you think it should go, then, then you go that way. But it's not that way now.
Well, I know that, I mean.
It's any more than, any more than your position, you know?
Yeah. Well, like I said, if somebody wants to give me something to do, I'll do something. I don't care. Don't bother me.
But-
He does it too. He's not kidding.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, I mean, you-
I mean, hey, put it on me, I don't care.
Okay, is there anything else?
I don't have any.
I'll probably take that job, I don't know.
Yeah, you can do that. You wanna be the wife of that?
Well, I never know.
I don't. Okay, uh.
Couldn't do any worse.
Sorry.
I have nothing else to say.
Okay, well, I originally had something, a couple of other things that have been resolved since I requested them. There was a couple of questions that came up about the water plant schedules, the duties. The administrator told me that there was a safety concern about them working an excessive amount of overtime. They're working about four hours at a time of overtime, six or seven times a month divided up among four guys. Anyway, as I looked at the monthly schedule for the month of, of August, we've got six days of, six eight-hour shifts to cover under overtime. Of those six shifts, four of them are because there was two people scheduled off, the regular scheduled days off on the same day. The other two are vacation time, which naturally you're gonna have to pay overtime to backfill that because we're working at the minimum, minimum staffing level down there now. But I do think that if this schedule was a little more closely attended to, it could eliminate some of this overtime, particularly this, this month. I don't know if this was representative of all the months, but this particular month, there was, four of the six days were specifically covered because the, the days off were scheduled together, I think by accident, because they're not, it isn't like, in fact, I wouldn't wanna work under this schedule really, because you got, the guy has one day off and then three days later he has his other day off, and it's that way all over the schedule, so they could've-
That's the difficulty of it.
I know that, I've done scheduling on this kinda stuff and it's hard. But in this particular case, where a lot of the overtime came from, those days could've been moved and not, say, you're breaking up somebody's weekend or something, or a guy has Wednesday and Thursday off and you're making him split it. They're already split on here to, to do that, so, I don't know, I, just looks to me like it could've been done differently, but maybe not. The other thing is I'm still concerned about the, the use of the village vehicle down there at all times of the days and nights. I mean, people call me all the time, you saw the, the village truck go down at, you know, eleven-thirty at night or ten o'clock at night, you know? I would like to see as many functions as we can, and I realize it's not gonna be real easy to do it now, or maybe even possible to do it now with the, with the one man down. But I think that when they're doing extra things like watering the plants or checking something unless it's an emergency, they should do it when there's a shift with two people on it. And there are shifts where there's two men on the day shift.
Two days this month, two days. That means you're only gonna water the plants two days?
I think, well, I think the way they've got this, of course, you're using that second man that was normally on the day shift to fill the other guy that's not here.
Exactly.
I understand that.
Well, you can't, I mean, we've got-
But maybe, maybe we'll have to have somebody else water the plants, I don't know. But I don't think it's good to leave the water plant unattended to do something like that. That, that job was given to them when they were overstaffed and to justify having two men on one shift. And they started coming up with ideas, what can the water plant do when they're not doing the water plant?
Well, I mean, take watering the plant is, is like an hour and plus job. And they don't, they go by the water plant and check in, it doesn't take any more time than them driving out and doing the water testing for chlorine at the tank that they do every day. It's really not, it's really not much of a deal and it's done at night, but it's no issue of traffic congestion and safety. I mean, we need to, uh-
Well, I know another thing that we're always- Well, I know, another thing that we're always told was that they were doing water testing. See, that was why they were up at Stewart's all the time or something. And I have a list someplace here of the water testing requirements, and you'd be surprised how thin they are.
Well, you're talking about for tri-hail methane, not for chlorine.
No, I'm talking about all of them.
Chlorine has to be tested every day.
In the water plant.
And the tower. Now, they have testing sites around the village, you know, that they have to do for that.
They have 13 different things that they're required to test for. Radium and turbidity and asbestos and stuff like that. Of the 13, three of those are one time a year. Five of them are one time every nine years. And one is one time every three years. Then the rest of them, most of the samples are taken at the plant. There is a couple where they have to go all over the village to take samples.
Every corner they have to do that.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, it's once every, yeah.
Every corner.
Four times a year.
Right. But they have to test every day for chlorine in both places. You can't just, they have to do that, too. I mean, those are, yeah, those are specific tests they have to do. But what is the issue here?
The issue is every time you see the truck go by and you ask, "Where's the truck going by from?", and they say, "Well, they're taking samples. They're up at Stewart's." What are they doing up at Stewart's, the village truck? They're taking samples. That's the answer all the time.
At the tower and on the way back. Maybe they stop and get a cup of coffee, I don't know.
We like to make a lot of trips to the village garage, too. And there was one person that took that vehicle you're talking about, one up there on a great day. I don't set policy, but we're talking about the use of this vehicle all the time.
Which has been in an accident.
That vehicle is up at the village garage constantly. So I guess what I'm saying is rather than stick my nose in it personally, which I'm not doing, I just think that, and I don't think we need to, meaning the mayor, the administrator, anybody, you have a water plant manager down there, the chief operator. It's his duty to make sure that that place is run not only safely and according to regulations, which is the first priority, of course, but also on staffing levels and scheduling and use of that vehicle. And I'm gonna continue to monitor, but I think it, somebody needs to talk to him, maybe, I don't know. And that's all I have at this time.
Okay, I've got a report.
I have nothing.
Mr. Treasurer?
The only thing I have is I had Patty and Becky count the number of LED bulbs we have left through the IUP program, and we have 729. It's about 12 cases of them, I think. And I'd like to get permission from the board on a first-come, first-served basis to give one to each of our electric customers, to get rid of them. We got some to save, there's some out in the garage.
Is there any, are there any village officers, buildings that need bulbs that we can replace with LEDs? Red bulbs, they're all LEDs now.
We changed ones at the train station.
Yeah.
Right, Benny?
Yeah. We took six of them, I think it was. Six of them.
I know, we changed plenty, too, up there.
Maybe save a few extras for each building site, you know? Send a couple to the library to keep for spares, a couple at the train station, wherever they fit, and then give the rest away. They're not saving any electricity, they're saving on a power ration.
I think first-come, first-served basis is fine. I think we should put it in, on the electric bill, you know, in your little notes that you send out, say, "The following, starting the following month, if you request, you know, you can request a bulb when you come in, you'll get it."
Well, I think what they ought to do is just put a case of bulbs out there on the counter, and people come in and say, "Take a bulb, please." You know, I mean, for the residents, I mean...
Yeah, well, I mean, wherever he wants to put it.
Yeah, just let people know, be aware of it. Yeah. In other words, the answer to your question, we just said yes, right?
Just put it, yeah, I would put it on a, on the bill first, so people know, and then you can, you know, don't expect somebody to go back and forth, obviously, you're gonna have to...
No, we just have a case there, and we just have a case at the front counter, and we pass it out.
Right, that's what they always did.
Baysor Utility Bill, you know, that's how we did it before, it's not that big a deal.
Continue with that, Mayor.
So do you want, how many bulbs do you want to keep?
We wanna say two cases.
That's 100 bulbs.
Should take care of everybody in the village. All the village officers, I mean, it's not like they're gonna go bad. Two cases of 100 bulbs.
Library.
You wanna say one case?
No, you don't need a case, probably six of them, probably.
Well, that's for the...
For the whole village, wherever they need them.
They're just regular light bulbs, right? They're just regular light bulbs, so I mean, it's...
Yeah, you said they're 100 in a case.
100 in a case.
50 in a case.
50, yeah, 'cause I looked at them with Dave Cano, we looked at, counted that case.
Okay, so let's save one case, and give the rest of them to our residents. Okay, Mr. Pope, can you do that?
The other thing, Benny, is you are right, I believe we did get that money for the library. I believe that came in a check, and I thought you were talking about something I'm looking for, for an ACH.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Pope?
Tomorrow's our day to change that broken hydrant on the south end of the village. There was notice sent out to the village residents on the south end that it'll be in a boiled water quarter. So we'll be working just south of this accident, getting that hydrant repaired. We have to put a new valve on it, that's the reason why. We have to shut the village, that end of the village down, there's no valve on it. But we are gonna install a valve, so if it ever has a problem again, we'll be able to just shut the hydrant off. We're going over, I had a little meeting with Brian John last week about the report that EAS sent us about our water plant, and we're reviewing, they're in the final stages of sending that to the health department for the review of the retrofit in the water plant. So we go forward, hopefully we get the approval to go forward on that project.
How is EAS?
That's our engineer.
I know, I know. Are they gonna take care of all the time, take care of the support health problem?
Between themselves, and we're gonna have, Mr. John is gonna keep a closer eye on them to make sure that the contact is there, so Mr. Canosen knows exactly what we're doing and what our schedules are of the starting up of the pumps and the changing of the other one. And they did include the skid units for the chlorine units for the water tower and the pumps. I talked to trustee Arno about, we're gonna get an authorization to go out to bid for the electric department to do some preventive maintenance on our substation. We have four large transformers that supply the village. What we're gonna do is have a company come in and go through the oils, do the oil testing, another oil testing. We usually do them once a year, so they have a chart to go by, and they're gonna clean up the inside of the transformers for us, one at a time. So Kurt Wilson and myself, we were working on the scope of the project, and we thought that the money-wise would be within, without our procurement policy on the outside of it, but he thinks it's gonna come in under. So we're gonna get our three written quotes, and I'll bring them back to the board, so we can go forward on our substation maintenance, so we can keep that running very smooth the way it should be.
The gas analysis and...
Yes, gas analysis, the water, park, water, everything. We'll make sure that if there's any leaks, they'll seal them, and they do a complete, it's like getting your car serviced at a higher end. I went to a FEMA meeting today for Storm Stella, back when we had our snowstorm. Our son and myself worked on getting all the information together about getting reimbursed. It looked very good, we're about halfway through the paperwork. FEMA will be coming with a kickoff meeting to the different municipalities on the 21st, starting on the 21st, so we'll be lined up to get some money back from Storm Stella. Looks really good to put in county. It was a very important, you know, informational meeting today. Other than that, we're fucking way out of our jobs, there's a lot of broken water lines lately. You've seen us dig up sides of the roads, I mean Pratt Street, I mean, we had one over there, one of the other side streets, I have another one on Church Street.
It's like you got the sidewalk stuff and you've done on Chapman.
On Chapman, yeah, we're getting ready for blacktop. We're at the county, you know, we're waiting for the county to get ahold of us. Like trustee Vassal was saying about us pouring the cement, after a certain day, it's not a good idea that we're gonna be putting salt on them.